At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for July 1st, 2014, 5:00 PM to order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on any?
Mr. President, I got a couple of comments on item 1C under the, or 1B, excuse me, the city manager activity report, just four people that left city service last month. Shouldn't be recognized. Wayne Thompson worked at the street department, Martin Grebel with the fire department, Paul Keen with the utilities, and Julie Deering who did 16 years with the New Ulm Police Department. So, on behalf of the council, we want to thank them for their service. My other item is under 1E, the CBB financials. I sit on that commissioner, that board. We are preparing the budget. We have prepared that. It'll go in front of us on July 9th. It'll come back to you, to us for approval at the 2nd July meeting, I'm assuming. Everything's kind of moving along there. We're still looking at some management issues, but hopefully that'll be also brought to you shortly with some change in concept, potentially.
Potentially.
How's that, Ms. Shaneman?
Poten- potentially, yeah.
That'll work?
Yeah.
Still in the works.
Any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct a public hearing to consider a variance request to section 8.08 of the noise ordinance for the purposes of allowing construction activities to occur during the night on the city towers located at the New Ulm golf course.
I'll open the, to a public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm assuming we're gonna, we're notifying the neighbors of this.
We're just opening the public hearing.
Yeah, we have to pass that motion.
Anybody like to be heard in the public hearing?
We didn't vote on the motion.
No. Oh.
We have to open.
Open the public.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Okay, the public hearing is open. Any discussion? Anybody like to be heard? Anything from the city council?
I'd just like to be reminded who's actually doing the work and sort of a summary of what the work is and what type of equipment is being used and that sort of thing.
Ms. Kayler?
Well, Mr. President, I'm not familiar with this particular request. It is the tower at the golf course. I assume there will be painting and sandblasting, so we'll have compressors, they'll have compressors and those type of things. I'm not sure who the contractor is. We can get you some more information if you want to pull off on this decision.
Well, I don't think that's, I want to make sure that the proper notices have been sent out, and if there's anyone here who wants to be heard, we should hear it right now.
Well, it must be Trillium because in one paragraph, Trillium is requesting a permit to work at night from the hours of closure till the early morning, so I'm assuming it's Trillium would be the...
Yeah, and if you, if you scroll down, it also tells you that they're going to be working on making the tower more secure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And the dates aren't set yet, so we don't have a date.
Yeah, right.
They're just getting permission to work at night.
Mm-hmm.
So, anybody here want to be heard on that? Seeing none?
Well, I just have one other question. If people would, were to have questions, assuming that after we close the public hearing, that we grant the variance, I'm wondering if people have questions or concerns as it's going on, who should they be contacting?
City manager, I'd assume.
Or the engineering department, I would assume.
They can contact the city manager's office or the city engineer's office, whichever would work for them.
Good, thank you.
I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries.
I move we authorize the variance request as set out in the issue sheet.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to authorize the variance. Any more discussion on it? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 2B, consider a resolution approving the modifications to the development program for development district number one and modification number one to the tax increment financing plan for the redevelopment tax increment financing district number R9, city center street apartment project. Also a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard? Nobody wants to talk in none?
Nobody's want, I'll, I'll move that we acknowledge that the public hearing was held and declared closed.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries.
And then I'll move that we offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the modifications to the development district and tax increment financing as set out in the issue sheet. Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Yes, this did come, this did come before the planning board, and we did discuss it and determine that it fit the plan, and there was no reason to, no reason to deny this. The one item of discussion was that the, basically, this is where the apartment, the city's, city center apartments are going to be going, and the, the district is expanding to include what, what people might refer to as the Corinthian House, and that, that house is going to be removed, and we did talk to the developer, and apparently that's the house, although it looks like it might be in good shape from the outside, has deteriorated quite a bit in the inside, and so it will be, it will be removed. There won't be any other changes. It'll just be more of a balanced site with green space on one side and a parking lot on the other. So, that's basically the plan.
All 39 units going to be built at the same time?
Mr. Kratch is here. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Kratch, Minnesota. Yeah, we build 39 units at one time.
And your timetable?
Well, later in your agenda is a change of the purchase agreement for a year, so...
So, we'll find out in a little bit, huh?
There's still some open issues with the remedial work, and we're still waiting on the MPCA for a couple of issues, and so we're just working through them, and it's a slow process, and it's a little frustrating, but been here before, I guess we'll survive it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Laura?
Well, and I think, Mr. President, I think you have a website up if people are interested in the project.
It's not complete, but it gives you a feel for the project.
And that site is where, or is what?
Good.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 2C, public hearing on the proposed sidewalk improvement pursuant to section 168 of the city of New Ulm city charter, or rephrase that, section 168 of the New Ulm city charter. There we go. Any discussion?
Mr. President, as you may recall, this was a area of missing sidewalk on the south end of Broadway, basically between Burger King and the new apartment building that was constructed across the highway from Hy-Vee, to give you a few landmarks. The Safety Commission recommended that the sidewalk be ordered in. The council set up the public hearing. It consists of about 268 feet of missing sidewalk. There was two property owners that we sent notices to. I haven't received any written comments, but you could open that up for the public hearing now.
Anybody like to be heard on the sidewalks? Step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Norm Lentz, and I'm not from New Ulm, but I'm with my mother-in-law, Chio Tuz. She and her husband have been living in one of the properties there for, in a house that they built over 50 years ago. The property where the apartments now reside, her husband's family, parents, lived in a house on that property. So, they've been living without sidewalks there for a long, long time. I guess, I wasn't fully aware of what, that this was a council meeting tonight with a full agenda. I was given the impression that it was an information meeting on this particular item, so I apologize for that. But I'm wondering, is if this gets approved, I assume it would not be approved finally tonight, one way or another. I guess that's a question.
I guess it would be.
It would be.
Would be, okay. So, if it were approved, would the sidewalks be installed at the city's expense or at the homeowner's expense?
Mr. President, section 168 of the New Ulm city charter allows that the property owner can, may construct the improvement privately, and he will usually, as I've suggested, give until the end of the year, October of this year, to do it privately. If at that time they're not constructed, the city will generally order them in, or add them to a construction project the following year, and the cost of those improvements would be specially assessed to the joining property owner. So, the city does not pay for them in either case, is normally how these are handled.
Now, would we get any idea early up front of what the assessed value or assessed cost of the construction would be if the city undertook it?
You could get quotes from private contractors. I could give you a cost estimate of what I think it might be. You know, there are several ways to do that.
Is the requirement for the sidewalk, should it be approved, being done simply because the apartment complex was built and they put in sidewalks?
I think it's, it's more than that, Mr. President. It, you know, it offers a connectivity to that, for that segment of town. It certainly is part of the reason, but it's not the only reason in my judgment.
Okay. I, I'm not in construction business, and I don't know too much about sidewalks, but I understand there are sidewalks and there are sidewalks. Will there, would there be specifications that clearly define how these should be built and what dimensions and what quality, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, Mr. President, the, as in the alternates to consider, I've recommended that if the council orders in the improvements, they allow the impacted property owners the option to construct the required sidewalks, provided that they are constructed according to current city specifications, and the work is completed prior to October 1st of this year, we would supply you with those specifications.
Okay. All right.
And, oh, Mr. President?
Yes.
I might just say that it was maybe about 10 or 15 years ago that sidewalks were ordered in, in front of the residence that I share with my husband, and it did seem that we, each of the contractors knew what the specifications were, and there were, there were several people to choose from, several people who did that type of work and, and were willing to give a, an estimate of, of what it cost. And, but the choice is for the homeowner to either put in sidewalk or self, or just wait until the next construction season when it's put out for bids by, by the city along with another project. And I don't know if the cost is substantially different. I think the difference from, from our point of view, from a homeowner's point of view, is that when we put it in, we had to pay the contractor upfront, whereas if you left, let the city put it in, I think we allow a certain amount of time for that, for that assessment, and you know, it goes on your property taxes, and it's paid over a 10-year period of time. So, that was one of the considerations that at least we took into account when deciding which, which way to proceed.
It's good information, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Hello, my name is Ken Winchell, and my wife that owns the majority of property, she owns just about everything, I think. I'm a little surprised to be at a council meeting discussing sidewalks, or Danny Berneck isn't here for at least nostalgic reasons. Most of my questions were answered already, thank you. Mr. Kayler, would you care to give an estimate per running foot of roughly sidewalk, sidewalk would cost?
Sidewalk is about six feet wide. You've got excavation, forming, cost of concrete labor, roughly $5 per square foot, so for a running foot, it'd be $30 on a six-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay, yeah. There would be no penalty for us if we did not do it this year and the city did it next year? There are any fines or?
No, that would be a city council action by resolution and, or by, yeah, by resolution.
All right, and then, once the sidewalk is constructed, I know that we're required to maintain it for snow removal, but what about maintenance, like, you know, a few years later it cracks or something like that? Who's responsible for that?
If you construct it privately, you would be responsible for any cracking or settlement or anything of that nature. If the city does it on a contract, we have a policy that we will basically bird dog it for 10 years, but there's some criteria established with that. Can't be a hairline crack, it's got to be an inch wide, et cetera. It has to be a trip hazard, and we'll go back and replace a couple of sections for free, so, at our expense, so.
I would...
If you do it privately, you get to take care of it.
Okay, all right. So, that might be an incentive for us to allow the city to do it, then. I would imagine there are certain tax implications, you know, one way or the other, and I would, of course, take that up with the professional people, have that, do that for me. This is, I'm glad that I could ask these questions, and the questions are asked before me. It's helpful in this process, and it's also helpful to know a little bit roughly what it's going to cost my wife. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Hearing none, I'll offer a motion to adopt the resolution, waive the reading, close the hearing, and order the sidewalk improvements pursuant to section 168 of the New Ulm city charter at Broadway and 20th South, 260, 1.4 feet south, uncompleted west side.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, adopt the resolution, waive the reading, and close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
To be clear, is it on the alternates to consider, the last line, are we going to allow the impacted property owners the opportunity to construct it privately prior to October 1st of 2014?
I would assume.
We always have, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I should have included it above.
That's okay.
Thank you.
No more discussion? Finance Director, please call to roll.
Sorry, excuse me a second. Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, consider a motion approving the issuance of a temporary on sale liquor permit for ciphered Bianchi American Legion Post 132.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Well, let's hope that Riverside Park is not underwater.
Not a river.
Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 3B, consider a motion approving the issuance of a peddler's license for Thomas Sandoro of Southwestern Advantage Company.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 3C, consider a motion approving the issuance of a tree license to Alan Metzen, Metzen Tree, Metzen Tree Service.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 4A, number one, receive a notice that the planning commission has determined that the modified development program for development district number one and modifications number one of the tax increment financing TIF plan for district R9 are consistent with the city general development plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 4A, number two, consider approval of an amendment to the city comprehensive plan to allow industrial land to use, land uses in place of the mini density residential and high-density residential land used for property generally located on a northwest one-quarter and a northeast one-quarter section township, or section 13, township 110, range 31.
I'll offer that, a resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any discussion?
Well, I'm not sure if every, everybody has really paid that much attention to this. We did, this did come before planning, and it's the recommendation of the planning that we go ahead with it. Basically, this is a section of property on the northwest side that's outside the city limits, but we need to include it in our, in our plan, you know, in order to, for continuity. The reason it came before the planning commission is because there's a conflict between what the county has in its plan and what the city has in its plan, and after a meeting with the county, the community development director decided to come to the planning commission and ask for this change. Essentially, our plan, and I read it, all of the plan with regard to this northwest section, did talk in terms of the need for industrial property out there, but also the need for this type of medium and high-density residential. And since that plan, since 2007, a lot of the need for medium-density and high-density residential land uses has been taken up by other properties. We just, we have two of them in front of our agenda, in our agenda today. It's the, the Broadway apartment building that we just ordered sidewalks for connectivity, and the planned city center apartments, as well as a number of other projects that have, that have taken place in northwest. So, that need seems to have been taken up in other places, and perhaps the thing that was the most important to me is that the interest, the calls that, that the community development director is getting as far as what use to put this property to, is more along the lines of the industrial. And so, that's, you know, in light of all those, in light of all those things, the planning commissioner, commission did unanimously recommend approval of this change.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5A, consider a motion authorizing the city manager to accept bid award for the New Ulm Public Works Building roof retrofit project.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
According to the bid.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 5B, consider a request to amend the purchase agreement between Ego Development, that city center, and Minnesota Strauss, and the city of New Ulm to July 1st, 2015 closing date.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, and I think we, we talked about this earlier. Basically, this is taking a longer period of time because of the condition of the soil and those sorts of problems, and I'm sure we're all, we're all frustrated, would like it to move a lot closer, but it'll happen when it happens, so...
Any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 5C, receive previously opened bids and consider award of a contract for the 2014 MSAS improvement project.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. The bid award is stamina paving in amount of $2,686,216.42. No more discussion?
Mm-hmm.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no? Motion carries. Item 6A, consider a resolution declaring a state of emergency due to conditions resulting from the flooding event of June 2014.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, declaring a state of emergency.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any discussion?
I see that we have Dave Borkert, our Emergency Management Director, here. I wonder if he wants to brief us a little bit on this?
He's ready.
I'm Dave Borkert. Yeah, I'm happy to certainly address any questions that you have, Mr. President, members of the council. We have, of course, with all the rain that we got, there's an executive order by Governor Dayton, Executive Order 4-11, that declared several counties within the state, state of emergency. Our county was one of them. This is a, an important part of the process. Basically, all the cities, you know, declare a state of emergency, and then from there, what we're doing is we're working closely with the county, and we actually have a meeting here next, be on July 7th, where the state and Homeland Security, Emergency Management, and then also FEMA, federal FEMA will be down here, and they're basically doing a preliminary damage assessment, a PDA, and, you know, basically, we're trying to get all our ducks in a row. We'll have, hopefully, we'll have department heads, people from engineering and things there, and then we're able to kind of demonstrate what we have. We've documented things relatively well, and then, you know, from there, we go along with the process. It's always, I've been through it before. It's kind of a long process involved. A lot of times it takes a while, but we, we certainly want to have everything done on our end, and, you know, try to get everything going quickly, or as, as quick as we possibly can. Far as the river, you know, fortunately, we didn't quite get the rain that was expected this last week, and it continues to drop, but we had a lot of flash flooding and stuff throughout the city, and it involved a lot of basements and stuff, water in basements and stuff, that, something that, a little different than what we've seen before, but again, we had a lot of localized flooding. A lot of times, we're always kind of watching the river. Everything that happens, you know, north eventually affects us, but we're, of course, dealing with that as well as, you know, a lot of rain, a lot of localized flooding. So, just as far as an update, if there's anything that I can, can answer, I'm certainly willing to do so.
I've got a couple of questions if I could.
Go ahead.
One of them is, these are two potential projects, the reconstruction of Highway 13, the failed storm sewer, and then also the Milford Street. Can we add projects to that down the road? I mean, we know that, you know, Garden Street got hit pretty bad with a lot of... I mean, we know that, you know, Garden Street got hit pretty bad with a lot of water damage in that area. We know the Payne Street got hit with some pretty tough sewer damage and there's some other parts of our city that got hit. Can those be, how do we determine what areas can be included in this storm damage or this state of emergency?
Mr. President, what, the, the project is still open at this point. These are the two, the biggest things that we, we're dealing with. But there's gonna, you know, realistically, it hasn't closed yet. There could even be, you know, high levels of rain tomorrow and that would be included within this particular project. And other things that we're identifying is, is included with it. We're, I'm real cautious with talking about like private property.
Right.
But it, it is certainly something that we're documenting and that we're gonna be forward. We're gonna take every effort as far as hopefully helping the homeowners and stuff as far as being able to file a claim. But again, I'm very cautious, quite honestly, I don't think it's extremely realistic. I know that one criteria that they use is if there was forty percent, like with the homeowners, if there was forty percent damage and there was no insurance. But to meet that level, I mean, realistically, you're probably talking about a house that got knocked off its foundation and things like that. But again, we're, we're documenting, we're certainly gonna be bringing it forward during that PDA to FEMA and then also to HSEM. Does that answer your question?
It does. And my second question was, once, if we are awarded some funding, what group decides where that money goes? I mean, the money comes back to the city, but how is it gonna be appropriated and how, is that part of your role? Is part of the committee's role?
It's, there's worksheets that are filled out and realistically, you know, the, the PDA is the very first part of that. There's certain things that we have to, like, you know, they'll be giving us direction exactly how we meet that. We have bids as far as getting the projects done. And then, you know, after that, first of all, there's approval and then after that, that we've provided that according to their specifications and stuff. And a lot of times, you know, we're dealing with flood damage that we had back in two thousand six, two thousand seven and we're first finishing that off as far as getting the final payments and stuff from FEMA.
Tell me my next question. This is the federal government, this is not a quick process.
It's, it's a long process. So like, even for example, if we weren't included in that first part, which it appears we are, you could still file the claim later on. It's just you always want to be on that, that front side of it if possible because it moves slow enough the way it is. And, you know, we just feel it's our responsibility again to try to get on the, the first part of that and that's just common sense. We're working really close with the Brown County Emergency Management. They've been very helpful to work with. They had their emergency operations center open until they just closed it basically on Friday. So, I mean, that's, that's been open the entire time and we're trying to address concerns that homeowners have. I've personally been out at several of the places that had damage, like with their basements and stuff and, you know, tried to come up with resources and stuff that are available. There's, you know, there's different programs available through veterans associations. Eventually, there's gonna be some small business association loans that also cover homeowners as well. That's something that may be available and we're, you know, we're certainly trying to capture every resource that's possible.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
No more questions? We got a motion to offer the resolution, close the reading, waive the reading, I should say. Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six B, consider motion instructing the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the city code, section four point five five, to delete the section in regards to photographers.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Well, we, we talked this over before and apparently staff has also reviewed the license requirement and determined that it's really not necessary to have photographers.
No fees, there's no.
Right. Alright, so.
Okay. No more dis, excuse me, no more discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item six C, consider resolution approving the first amendment of the city amended to the, restated development agreement with the Economic Development Authority, the city of New Ulm, Minnesota and HADC Ridgeway for tax increment financing TIF district H two located at seven fifteen South German Street.
Okay, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
We got a motion and a sec, oop.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any discussion?
Well, let's, what are we doing here?
Reggie, you wanna bring us up to data now?
Perhaps I could.
Yes.
Spoke to Hugh about this prior to his going on vacation. The original TIF agreement provided, of course, that there was a rate of interest that would be applying to this that was in sync with what the developer was paying. He's getting, he's got a lower rate of interest at one point and it's going to be further reduced. So, I think that's the primary thrust of this. It'd be to have the agreement consistent with the actual interest rate being paid, which would end up saving the city some money. So, I think that's the point of the amendment.
Right, and this, this is the original Ridgeway on German.
Been in place for a long time.
Yep, it's, it's twenty-five years, alright, okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six D, consider resolution approving the MinDOT Office of Aeronautics Amendment, number one, to grant agreement, number zero three nine one three, for the airport maintenance and operation.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any discussion?
Sounds like we're getting more money. Is that right?
Mr. Kayler.
Uh, Mr. President, yeah, excuse me. This amendment, well, there's a cover letter. The state was legislative process authorized approximately another million dollars through the Office of Aeronautics. Anybody who has grant agreements got a little piece of that. This particular one is for operation and maintenance reimbursement. Used to be two thirds, the cost or sixty-six percent and now it's seventy-five. It's about an additional three thousand dollars, but it'll be helpful.
Second.
Good.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six E, consider resolution approving the MinDOT Office of Aeronautics Amendment, number one, grant agreement, number zero four eight six two.
I think we have a record for resolutions tonight.
Yes, right.
Motion to adopt the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, up, adopt the resolution, waive the reading, any discussion?
Mr. President, this, this amendment is quite, quite a bit more substantial. The state is increasing their participation from a point three percent to five percent. So, there, the city's cost is gonna decrease by about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and the state will pick that additional amount up, so that's, that's a nice offer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Consider, item six F, consider motion approving task force order number two zero one zero dash eleven for the airport engineering services to the Mead and Hunt Professional Services Contract. Mr. Kayler.
Mr. President, this is a, an engineering service agreement of approximately sixty-six thousand dollars to develop an exhibit A, which is an airport property inventory map as a result of the recent property acquisition. This is another step in the process to get reimbursement for that purchase and this will be reimbursed at ninety-five percent cost. So, the city will have to fund about three thousand dollars. But it's something we need to do.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, motion carries. Item six G, consider motion to accept the proposal to complete emergency storm sewer repairs on Center Street, county, state, eight highway thirteen.
I'll offer the motion to accept the proposal from M and R.
Second, this seems to be an emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got a motion and a second to accept the proposal from M and R paving, any discussion? It's in amount of seventy-five thousand, sixty-five, seven dollars and seventy-two thousand.
Mr. President, I would just mention that this utility system is, totally emanates from the city right of ways and limits and does not drain any of the CASA thirteen, so that is why the city is responsible for this improvement or this fix.
I think we should share it with.
Well, and I was just wondering if the work has started yet or.
Mr. President, we were hoping the contractor is scheduled to go tomorrow. We, we, my assistant, Joe Stadheim, worked quite aggressively at getting quotes and proposals and the structure had to be, it's concrete, it had to be poured, it had to cure for seven days and I've been, we've been in contact with the Brown County engineer and we, if we are very lucky, it'll be open on Monday, so that's our goal. So, we understand it's a prime entrance to the city.
Our M and R guy over there is nodding his head.
The concrete's cured, alright.
We submitted that deal together.
Any more discussion? None, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, motion carries. Item six H, consider resolution authorizing the city sidewalk cafe located at the pantry at two oh nine North Minnesota Street and authorize an extension of liquor license into the sidewalk cafe area.
I'll offer the resolution.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion?
Oh, this just sounds like so much fun.
Oh, it sounds like a grand idea.
Yeah, it really does, it really does.
It's a great new place.
Right.
Back to their business.
Right, and I, I don't see any, you know, we, we've talked this over and put in guidelines and I think it'll just be a lot of fun.
As long as they follow the position of the, you know, up against the da-da-da-da, yes.
Right, mm-hmm, yep, great.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six I, consider resolution authorizing the issuance and establishment of the terms and conditions of the sale of general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond series two thousand fourteen.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any discussion? Reggie?
President Schmidt and council, just wanted to point out, I handed out earlier that we now have a suggested sizing for this bond at two million eight hundred and twenty thousand. You can see the, the principal amounts and the years that those will be due. And when I had written this last week, we didn't have this, so. So, we can set it at the two million eight twenty.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six J, consider motion updating the city manager's performance review materials and reiterate annual performance reviews.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to be on this committee as part of this, evaluating this and taking a look at the, the brief schedule and what we have to, to take a look at.
I certainly would as well. How many do you want on the committee?
Well, we can't.
Can't have more than two.
We only have two.
The reason this is actually on the agenda is just because of closed meeting laws and stuff like that in the past six years that I've been on the city council. I sat in a workshop up at the League of Minnesota Cities and the subject was power of elected officials. And what ends up happening is the city manager, the only way you can talk to him is based on the city council as a whole. One person can't because one person doesn't have the authority. Only the city council has the authority to make issues or demands or whatever we would want or set goals and so on, so forth. So, that's why this was put back on the agenda. And I guess I didn't realize that back in two thousand seven, it was discontinued before we got on and since that time, we got four new council people on and, so I don't know if this was done when Ruth Ann was on, but it, it's never been on for four of us anyways, so.
Well, and I think the, I think the, the idea is to update and prepare forms in a format for the city manager's evaluation. And I think that those, those forms are being, are readily available. I know, I think Dan Bernick and I were the ones who, who handled the, the last.
Right.
Review in, in two thousand seven. I can't remember what, what forms we used. I think that then in two thousand nine, we did a different type of performance review where it was the department heads who had input into, in the opportunity to comment on the city manager's performance. And, you know, then we reviewed those materials. So, really, what's happening right now is we've, we've got to develop the type of format that we want to use for, for a city manager performance review. So, I suppose as a part of that, a decision or a discussion should be had as far as whether, whether we would include in the performance review input from department heads, input from all the city council, in, input from the public or, or that, that sort of thing, so.
Well, what I'm proposing is that we put something together, bring it back to the city council for approval again. What we're gonna end up having to do is set goals, different things like that. Some of that's gotta be public information. I met with Roger earlier in the week to discuss some of this, what we need to do and he said he'd guide us through it, so.
Is this something that we would have HR do or are you thinking this committee with HR or not including HR at this point? I guess I'm not.
Without HR to start, we would, there's all kinds of like, Ruth Ann made a comment. There's all kinds out on the internet forums that we can get. I've already had different utilities send us some. So, they're available, so.
I know my personal preference, if you're gonna do a performance eval, it should be a thorough evaluation. So, it should include council members, it should include department heads and even major supervisors, including our mayor and our legal team and whoever, some of the major players that the city council or city president, manager works directly with. If they want to get adequate feedback, that's who their customers are, so, in my opinion, so.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm looking for is somebody to work with me. I know I got different ones, I don't know how we're gonna go about picking.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd also be interested in working on that committee, so I think you have like three people, so I don't know how you.
You can choose.
Yeah.
You don't have to do it, or maybe you do have to do publicly today.
I would assume so. I guess it really doesn't make me a lot of difference. I, I guess.
Like I said, I'm, I'm the only one who's done one of those reviews and I don't have to, I, I don't have to be in charge
of picking out the, the form, so. I'll step back.
Cause you'll be the one to have to do it.
Just what comes to mind is if nobody cares, I'll, I'll just ask Ken to work with me on it. And the only reason is, is we can work with our own schedule being both semi-retired.
That's fine.
So, that's, no comments or problems with it?
Nope.
We'll just go that route. We're still gonna bring everything back, so you're not gonna be left out.
Communication is, is the key to.
Yeah, we're just gonna do footwork, so.
That's right.
Okay.
Now, let me ask a question with the, the review. When we get to the review, is that done here publicly? Is that done behind closed doors?
What will happen, in my opinion, talking to League of Cities and other util, or cities that have done it, what they do is, the, once we get the form made out and everything, they're all sent out, they come back to the HR. HR goes and sends them all out to the city council for your review. At that time, we would call a closed meeting, sit down and review them as the city council.
Okay.
And I guess Roger would have to, from that point, right?
I agree with you, Mr. President. So we haven't, I haven't done one yet, so.
Well, that, that's, uh, if, I don't, my recollection is that the, that the review process is an exception to the open meeting law, that we can have a closed, we can, uh, announce that we're having a closed meeting, and the purpose of the closed meeting is to conduct the performance review of the city manager. Close, you know, we have that meeting.
So. Okay, I guess so. Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope, motion carries. Item six K, consider adoption of, op, excuse me, consider options regarding the provisions of legal services to the city of New Ulm and the New Ulm Public Utilities. I also had asked that one to be put on the council agenda. In the past six years, I've been asked by different people in the public and wherever, why we don't go out for that services when we go out for all the other services, and again, because of the closed meeting law, I can't go and talk to every one of the councilmen and see how they feel. So, we're forced to put it out here on the agenda and get feedback, and what I added is three options, and one of the options is, is basically do nothing and leave it as it is, or we can go out and solicit bids, which we do on all of our other services far as, uh, banking and so on and so forth, and, uh, we could do that. We do that every five years, and item C would be is to create an in-house attorney position, which is not uncommon in the city industry. Mankato actually has three full-time attorneys, and based on our size of the city, I would say maybe fifty percent do, fifty percent don't, so it's something that I just threw on the agenda to discuss and see what the input is of everybody else on the council.
So, Mr. President, you're recommending that we have the city manager, let me just see if I understand this correctly, um, take a look at putting a proposal together to do all three. Um, would that include bids for, since it's budget time, is, are you looking at, potentially at putting a request for two thousand and fifteen, I'm assuming, for what our current law firm would, would put out for next year's services?
Mm-hmm.
But are we asking them to go out and actually solicit bids at this point, or just what that would look like?
Well, I guess what I'm asking is to have the city manager's staff go in and look at what it would cost us to staff our own legal person, and then the other option is, is to go out and draw an RFP up so we can get requests for proposals and see what it would come out as, but there again, like I said, number A, I, it's up to the city council, maybe nobody wants to do anything. It's just, you know, if we're satisfied with what we got. I think, you know, if we're gonna go out for proposals, we have to do it now with the budget.
Right.
So we know where we're at for a budget item, and same thing is if we're gonna go out and look at staffing our own attorney, we're gonna have to have what it's gonna cost to staff that person, what the salary's gonna be, what our costs are gonna be to maintain records, whatever, books, you name it. It's not, to start up, it's not cheap.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, do we have any idea what we're spending now? Well, I'm sure we do.
Sure we do.
I mean, but, um, you know, that would be, have to be in on the comparison as far as, you know, as we look at either creating a position or, um, you know, when you go out and solicit proposals, I think that that's probably a good thing every five years, maybe to do that. They do it with auditors, they do it with banking, we do that with many other services, so, um, I, I would kinda support that, and then, um, I would also like to see, you know, what, would it cost us to have an in-house attorney, in-house staff in comparison to what we're paying out?
Mm-hmm.
In current legal fees?
Well, one of the things that, I, I think one of the reasons to pitch this over to the city manager, um, is because I think that in order to truly, uh, give this some consideration, I think you have to, people have to understand what, uh, the city attorney's office, uh, does right now. Uh, some of that work, uh, in other cities is done by, uh, other professionals. You know, if you just rattle through our, uh, agenda today, I think we rely more on the city attorney to, uh, draft, uh, contracts and, uh, do TIF districts and, and that sort of thing. I think we rely a lot more on our city attorney to do, uh, the labor relations, uh, piece. Uh, I think we rely on our city attorney for a lot of the history that's, uh, happened over, over the last thirty-five years, so I think before we, uh, start really even considering this, uh, I think that we should ask the city manager to make an, to, to literally list out the things that we, uh, depend on for, for the city attorney. One other thing that I would like to, um, consider, uh, in, on the issue of continuity, um, I, um, I think, uh, you know, in, when I worked, I traveled to a lot of other cities and counties, uh, and I think that, uh, the work of, of, of a municipality, whether it's a city or a county, can be disrupted, uh, by, uh, a change in, uh, in the, uh, attorney thing, whether it's by, like, I know the county struggled, but Clark died, so Clark Tuttle died so suddenly, and, uh, you know, things like that that are unexpected. So I think one of the things that I would like to, uh, set out on a, a proposal is that rather than having sort of a one-year, uh, contract, uh, with, uh, a city attorney, uh, is to, um, uh, you know, look at it like, uh, banking and auditing, when we, when we look at more of a long-term, uh, approach so that, uh, so that the city can rely on, uh, having, uh, a city attorney office or one particular office, uh, over a longer period of time and not just go, uh, year to year, so, that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, I think you'd have to do that.
Yeah, it would have to be a longer term.
Because the element of continuity and, and having the resources, uh, to, uh, to work at the level that we'd expect them to work.
Mr. President and city council members, the way I look at this is, is you're asking the city manager to, to prepare an analysis of all three of these, and once the analysis is done?
Correct.
Then you can say, forget it, uh, C is not even in the picture. Or...
Right.
Correct.
C and B is not in the picture.
That's what we've been talking about, we've been discussing that, you know, yeah.
I think, you know, if, there should be no reason that thirty days from now are the first meeting, well, gonna be, first meeting in August, there's only gonna be a few of us here.
Be a skinny meeting, yeah.
So. I don't know.
Might take a little more of that time than thirty days anyways.
Oh, sure.
But we can't drag it out too long because if we're gonna go out for proposals, we have to be geared up and ready to go before the first of the year, so I would say six weeks or something. End of August meeting, have, have the city manager have something ready for us, and go from there.
Thanks, Huns.
Well, maybe if we had it in that first meeting in August, that, these people would be attracted to come back.
Ah.
All right, well, I just, I, one other thing, um, not to, uh, speak for what the law requires, but, uh, just so that it's clear, um, for the public who ask questions, um, the, the professional services, uh, isn't covered by, uh, the state statute. We do not have to, uh, go out for bids, and if we do go out for bids, if that would, uh, if we would have a request for proposal, uh, but we do not have to accept the lowest bidder. And I believe that the, uh, basis for that difference is that, is the difference in the type of, uh, work that's being done. Uh, when the engineer prepares, uh, plans and specs for the sidewalk to be, uh, installed in, uh, front of Mr. Winchattle, Mrs. Winchattle's business in the twos property, um, it's just absolutely clear, you know, it's, it has to be this thick and this consistency, and there's a ten-year guarantee, and the sidewalk goes down, and everybody can do it the same. Uh, but when you're talking about a professional, uh, relationship, or you're talking about skills that, uh, aren't, uh, easily measured in relationships, uh, that, uh, aren't, uh, that, uh, aren't easily, you know, described necessarily in ki, in those sorts of, forgive the pun, concrete terms, so. Just so that people understand, that's, that's why you don't have to take, uh, the lowest bid for a bank or, or the, the lowest bid for, uh, for, uh, any other type of professional service, including attorneys.
Thank you. So, could we have a motion?
I move that we, uh, request that the city manager, uh, within the next, uh, six weeks, uh, prepare an analysis of, uh, the various options that, uh, have been discussed. Uh, I expect he'll be, uh, listening to this on tape when he gets back from vacation, uh, and if possible, I think we'd like to see it in the second, uh, meeting in August, and I'm sure he'll, uh, let us know if, uh, if it's gonna take a little bit longer than that.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope, motion carries. Item seven A, consider acceptance of a list of claims paid in the amount of two million forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope, motion carries. Item seven B, consider approval of a list of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
Addendum, sorry, sorry.
Make motion to approve?
I, I looked at it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nope, motion carries. Now, we gotta get out of here and go into an addendum.
I move we suspend the rule so we can hear the addendum item.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to suspend the rule so we can take an addendum item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope, motion carries. The addendum item is number one, old business, consider motion approving the plans and specification, authorize advertisement for bids and set bid opening date for Monday, August fourth, two thousand, uh, at two P.M., and authorize bid opening for the Minicon Park Water Access Site Improvement Project.
I think...
I'll offer the second.
Okay, and I would like to, like to hear what we're doing. I know it's, I know...
I think they have scuba gear on.
I know it's a long meeting, but I do wanna know what we're doing.
Read it, I've got supper waiting.
I know, I know, it'll be toast, but I would like to hear what we, what we got in mind.
Uh, President Schmitz, council members, um, the Minnesota Department, Tom Schmitz from the Park and Recreation Department, um, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources and the United States Coast Guard are still very interested in, uh, providing an improved water access site on the Minnesota River at Minicon Park, and this is just the next step in, uh, phases to complete the project. Um, we've got the plans and specifications have been prepared and reviewed by, um, all the parties involved, including our consultant, Bolton and Mink, um, and our Senate City Engineers Office, and, um, so we wanna approve the plans and specifications, advertise for bids, set the bid opening date of August fourth, and then, um, soon after that, we'll have an analysis and come back to the council in hopes to award the project.
Hopefully we'll see Minicon Park by then.
Uh, we'll, uh, we anticipate the Minnesota River reseating at some point in the future.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
It's a relatively simple project, includes, um, paving the parking lot and removing the old boat ramp and placing a new boat ramp out towards the channel off kind of the point. And, uh, will greatly, uh, improve access to the Minnesota River.
And if, if you recall, s, a few years back, it was moved second and passed, that we were gonna put up a simple little structure down there, like we, like we have along the, uh, the, uh, the bike path, the walking path. That hasn't ever happened yet.
There's a structure down there.
Yes.
That project has been completed.
It has?
And, um, there's a picnic table underneath the open shelter now, yes.
When did that happen, Tom?
Uh, I think it was about a month ago, Counselor.
Oh, a month ago, okay.
Before the water.
And it is, uh, you know, not in the, uh, walk, down, in the water, it's, uh, on high ground.
(laughing).
Picnic table is high and dry.
Ah, good.
Down there for dinner some evening.
I think so.
Yes, you swim to it.
High and dry.
High and dry.
Okay, any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope, motion carries. With no more business, peace concluded, meeting adjourned.
Good. I need a ride home, you driving?